Everyone to the Westchester County Rent Guidelines Board. It's our first public hearing. Tonight, we're going to hear testimony from tenants, owners, and other members of the public concerning how our Rent Guidelines Board should determine the rent adjustments. If for any reason, if any, for leases of apartments subject to the ETPA and such other business that may come before the board. Before we begin, I'm going to take attendance. And Chair Elsa Rubin sends her apologies. She missed a flight and, or rather, she had a flight delay, so she couldn't be with here, with us today. So I'm here acting as chair. My name is Evelyn Alisea Santiago. Welcome, everyone. So Chair Rubin is now here. I am present. So when I call your name, please let me know that you're present. Gregory Robeson Smith.
Present.
Natalie S. Felsenfeld Esquire.
She's running late.
Robert Withers.
Here.
Kenneth Finger Esquire.
Here.
Tamara Stewart.
Present.
Sylvia Hammer.
Here.
And Council Stedker, do we have any announcements this evening?
Just to let the board know what is already apparent, that there are two new members who've been fully appointed by our Commissioner. Gregory Robeson Smith is here now, and Natalie Felsenfeld should be coming a little bit later on. So that puts this board at eight members. I think the county's still looking for the last public member, but I'm not expecting that anyone will be recommended by the end of this term. Second meeting will be on Thursday, June 5th at seven in White Plains. The, some of the documents have already been sent to this board and have been posted online. The second batch should hopefully come tomorrow or the next day. And those will also be posted online for members of the public to view. We are working on trying to livestream these meetings. It did not happen tonight, but hopefully we'll be able to start livestreaming either on Thursday or sometime next week, all in the interest of openness to the public and getting with the 21st century. So that's all the announcements I have for tonight. Oh, just one more thing.
Yes.
Usually, the members of the public have three minutes for individuals, five minutes for entities. So if you want, I can keep time for you.
Yes, please, thank you. So as I call people up to speak, you have to let me know if you're representing an individual or an organization, because that will...
We need to sign up.
Um, yes, we do have a sign-in sheet if you want to come up and sign in. Thank you. All right, I guess we'll start calling our first person. Elena, and excuse me if I'm killing your name, Chu Fetteli.
You have that one.
Okay, I'm an ESL teacher, I know how to rename.
Thank you.
Are you representing an organization or are you...
I am.
Okay, what's your affiliation?
I'm the Chair of the Apartment Owners Advisory Council and the Building and Realty Institute. Good evening, members of the Rent Guidelines Board. My name is Alana Chupetelli, and I'm the Chair of the Apartment Owners Advisory Council. Like many of my fellow property owners, I come to you with a real concern because our industry is under attack. Tonight, I want to talk about something simple: fairness. Not politics, not slogans, just fairness. And the growing imbalance that's threatening not only owners, but the very housing system this county depends on. Let's start with the claim we hear a lot at these hearings, that landlords are making absurd returns, forty percent or more, we've been told. Sounds outrageous, right? Until you realize those numbers have two larger, large, major costs left out: mortgage interest and depreciation. No business, none, can ignore loan cost or long-term capital wear and tear, but somehow in housing, we're expected to. This isn't Wall Street, it's Main Street, and buildings don't maintain themselves. Now, I want to bring up something that really struck me. At a White Plains hearing, when speaking on good cause eviction, a public member of this board said, among other things, landlords are breaking up families. That's a strong accusation. And in the same breath, they voiced support for good cause eviction, a policy that guarantees lease, a lease renewal, and allows rent increases tied to CPI, plus five or ten percent, whichever is lower. Well, now, we all know that ETPA already has guaranteed lease renewals. Well, right now, good cause eviction allows for a rent increase of about eight point seven nine percent. And yet, we're being told we should accept much less than that. If this board sees good cause eviction as a fair standard, then why is that standard being applied across the board? Let's also not forget, buildings built after 2009 are exempt from good cause eviction in their entirety. So who carries the burden? Legacy owners. Again, how is that fair? And beyond fairness, there's a lack of transparency. From what I understand, HCR released updated numbers this Thursday on how many apartments are rent stabilized. But no one, no one, is tracking how many are market rate. Well, we've done the math ourselves. Out of roughly 145,000 apartments in the county, about 120,000 are market rate. That means stabilized units are the minority. They're the most regulated, they're the most restricted, and in many cases, the most financially unstable. And here's the kicker: HCR has data on which buildings carry mortgages. But, I'm hoping they release it this year, they wouldn't release it unless this board asks for it. So why are we being asked to defend our business decisions without a full picture? I can tell you what you'd find if you looked. I've seen my own numbers, I can break out my stabilized to free-market units, and the truth is, the stabilized side loses money. The only thing keeping the building afloat are the few deregulated units that we have left. That's not sustainable, and it's not just an owner problem, it's a housing problem. And I'd also like you to remember that the statute itself only regulates stabilized units. Pardon me, state, yes, stabilized units. So you don't even have rights to the information that you're asking for. Finally, let's talk about a crisis that no one wants to mention. Since HSTPA has passed, foreclosures are up. Banks don't want these buildings back. They're even condemning them in certain cases. People say landlords are breaking up families? What happens when the building is boarded up and everyone is out in the street? That's not protection, it's displacement. So in closing, I ask this board, set aside the slogans, look at the facts. It isn't just about landlords, it's about preserving housing before it falls apart for good. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Donna Cosenza.
Do you have no questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. I'm not going to use this, I think my voice is loud enough, you can hear me? Okay, great. Chupetelli, I'm particularly interested in the mortgage question, information that you gave us.
Sure.
If you don't mind me asking you, on the buildings that you own, whether or not you own them personally or you own them with partners, do you have debt on those properties?
We do.
Okay. On those mortgages, has the rate, is the rate going to reset or have they reset to market rates, given the period of time that you may have originated the loan, maybe the loan was at a lower rate?
Yes, unfortunately, they have, but for case in point, we have a building, 31 Pharaoh Street in Yawkers, it's an E3 unit. I was asked to reset a couple months ago. I'm now at six point five three percent. And in order to preserve the cash flow, because I need it to run the building, I'm doing it interest-only for three years. Because this is just absurd, what we're trying to navigate. There's not enough money being granted to landlords of this type of asset. And this board has to realize that you are our only means to just help us. We need it. You haven't done it, you got to start to listen and help.
So your interest rate went up basically three percent?
It doubled.
Yeah.
My interest, did my income go up three percent? No.
No. Okay, I have another question. And again, please bear with me, this is my first year doing this, so I'm going to educate myself this evening. Percentage-wise, on the operating expenses of your building, real estate taxes, insurance, you know, the regular operating expenses that would be affected in your NOI, can you tell me? Just give me a ballpark on percentage, what they've gone up.
Well, so you also have to remember, in doing these surveys, something that annoys the Academy, this is for 2024. So it's 2024 behind. So, case in point, taxes in 2024 in Yawkers, the taxes went up only two point five percent, but, and I say only, I have a North Yawker sewer rate, it went up eight and a half percent. I have a solid waste rate, it went up three point two five percent. My 2025 taxes in Yawkers, five point nine percent is going up. Eight percent on this North Yawker sewer rate. One point three on solid waste. My insurance, in 2024, ten point eight. To a like-minded policy, it went up nineteen point four percent. I can't afford that, so I upped the deductible to fifty thousand dollars. That means the first fifty K, I'm on the hook. Utilities, nine point six percent, that's, that went up. We all know Con Ed is looking for eleven to fifteen percent in an increase this year. And for the life of me, I cannot figure out, maybe somebody on this board can, how to deliver it to me, cost three times of what I'm using. We still haven't gotten an answer to that. Water, seventeen point seven percent. Repairs and maintenance, ten point six. That's my math. It's not a pretty picture.
Where's the shortfall? I mean, where, are you coming out of your pocket for this?
We come, we have to come out of pocket.
It's all out of pocket?
It's out of pocket.
No reserves?
We do have, you have reserves, but you don't have reserves, like, I mean, when your interest rates double, what kind of reserves do you have to carry that? There's no means to prepare for that. And that's what this board has to realize. Just as tenants are in a mess with the scenario of where the world is, so are we. And we need some help. You're not going to give us grant money from the state. Again, the only means for any type of common sense decision comes from this board. And I'm just asking you to look at the math, not the emotion behind it.
Thank you, Ms. Chupetelli.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you mentioned the percentages that everything has risen, and initially, you mentioned the mortgage doubled from three percent to six percent. So in terms of the income, what was your, the growth of income from this?
So it speaks to, the old, just, my father built these buildings. We, many of the property owners in this room, this is not our only gift. We have to have other jobs to support that job. I would, like, it's a lot. I'm a real estate insurance broker, I'm a real estate investor in addition to this. Today actually happens to be the five-year anniversary of my dad's death, so I find it very telling that I'm sitting here begging for my supper, and that's what it feels like. I thank you.
Our next speaker, Donna Cosenza.
I'm from landlords.
Do you represent an individual or an organization?
I have a small apartment building.
So you're an individual owner?
Individual owner, yes. We own a small apartment building in Hastings on Hudson with eight rental units, so, like I said, small. We purchased it forty-one years ago. This was going to be our retirement income. Now, most of our tenants are respectable people who treat their space with care. They call us for small problems before they become big problems. They leave the apartment room clean, good condition when they move on, we have a good relationship. We even put new people in based on what they, you know, recommendations. But there are also people who put up additional walls and doors without obtaining permission or approval, just so they can take in more people who are not on the lease. Tenants often use their security as their last month's rent, and there's really nothing we can do about that. So what do we do when we, when we have to, when they leave and we have to fix all this? Even a tenant who's only been in occupancy for one year can destroy the bathroom ceramic tile floor, the kitchen floor, put holes in the walls, through the doors. This is not normal cleaning. So, you know, the painting, floor polishing and all that that we have to do, this is, this is in addition. Plus, the building is now sixty years old. The apartments need to be updated. Where is this going to come from? We're no longer getting vacancy increases, so how can we do these updates? How can we update the spaces? There are original kitchen cabinets in there, sixty years old. Homeowners are moving upstate or out of state because they can't afford the taxes. Part of their tax increase comes from certioraries filed by landlords who receive little or in some cases, no rent increases. And I'm sure you, the public rent, public board members, feel this on your taxes. I believe that if tenants own their own space, like a co-op, if they paid for their own heat, their own water, their own taxes, their own maintenance, perform or hire out their own repairs, they might have more of an understanding of what it takes to run a building and would understand our need for increase. The Rent Guidelines Board is tasked with deciding the percentage of rent increase based on increased cost and nothing else. Nothing else. For our building, last year's increase, this is 2024, insurance twenty-two point seven percent. That translates into eight hundred, eighteen hundred twenty-one dollars. Water went up fifteen percent, eight hundred six dollars. So the total rent increase for last year for all eight apartments, for the whole year put together, was four thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars. Subtract the insurance and the water increase, and we're left with fifteen hundred thirty-seven dollars to work with for any improvements for the entire year. Fifteen hundred, all right, come on. Already, actually, I just got my, my insurance renewed for this year, and it's another twenty-two point nine percent, which translates into twenty-two hundred and fifty-three percent increase, and that's without, now, we're going to have other increases obviously as well. So kindly take this into consideration when discussing your guideline. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Nope.
Okay, next speaker is Pradeep Diman. I hope I'm saying it correctly. Pradeep Diman. Alexandra Lawrence.
Hi.
Hi. Do you represent an organization or...
Um, my mother and I, we're an organization.
So you're, so you're individual owners, okay.
So we're here tonight representing buildings that we own in White Plains. We have three buildings at total eighty-four units. If you asked our tenants, most would say they are very satisfied with their homes and are treated with respect. We respond to maintenance requests promptly, we keep our buildings clean, safe, and stable. We know our tenants, and many have lived in our buildings for years, if not decades. Rarely do we have a vacant apartment, because when we do, someone's friend or family member hears about it and moves in. So we care a lot about our buildings and about the people who live in them. And that kind of relationship is only sustainable if the economics of the building makes sense. And right now, it's not realistic. Tonight, I want to present data that reflects the economic reality landlord space in this kind of environment. Because, again, our goal is to provide quality, stable housing to our tenants. So let's start with operating costs over the past several years. Our heating oil has increased approximately forty percent in the last four years. Our real estate taxes have risen ten percent, our insurance has, we don't have any claims, is up thirty-five percent. For example, a stove, a standard white stove, has gone up thirty percent in four years. Our electricity from Con Ed is up twenty percent over the last three years, and we all know that there are more increases to come. And we all know inflation is about three point nine percent. So the numbers don't add up. Let's talk about rent. In our buildings, which are rent stabilized, a one-bedroom unit can range from eight hundred to eighteen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom apartment. And they're big, much bigger than newer buildings, and we try to keep them as nice as possible. Compare that to a new building that is considered affordable. For a single person, that's twenty-one eighty-eight, and for a family of four, that's three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. So ours are very much below market rate, and they often have multiple people living in them. I also want to talk about IAIs, which are necessary to maintain the standard that we try to provide. The thirty thousand dollar IAI cap is economically infiable. The actual cost of bringing a well-lived apartment to be safe, comfortable, livable ranges from a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With no ability to recoup those costs, many of these units are vacant, which hurts not only us, but the tenant who is looking for quality, stable, affordable housing. Let's also talk about MCIs. Prior to 2019, an MCI increase allowed us to increase rent six percent permanently. Today, we can only increase rent two percent, and it ends after thirty years. So it's impossible to replace the roof, the boiler, the electrical under these circumstances because it does not make sense business-wise to do so. Because we're a business as well, and we're not going to be a charity. And this is probably why there was data I saw somewhere that MCI applications have plummeted eighty-three percent over the past five years. So this is creating a lose-lose situation for everyone. Families who need housing go without it, and housing providers are penalized for attempting to modernize units under a cap that doesn't reflect the real cost of construction. And everyone on the board, I think, has a responsibility to uphold balance. And that means ensuring that landlords can at least make a modest living to pay taxes, utilities, insurance, repairs, and offer quality housing to tenants that are clearly well below market rates of new construction. And that's all I can say.
So anyone on the board have questions?
Yes. Thank you for your testimony, I appreciate it. Of all of your units, what percentage is rent stabilized?
All, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. So you don't have any market rent rate apartment subsidizing your rent stabilization?
Hundred percent.
Do you have debt on the building? Buildings?
A little bit.
A little bit?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask the same question. Is that debt resetting with an interest rate any time soon?
No.
Okay, so that's not an issue. Where's the shortfall coming with, coming from to do any work, if you can, on these buildings?
Well, we can, I mean, we just had to re-point the buildings. I, the roof is a whole, you can...
Because I was involved in that. We re-pointed part of the building, which was like a quarter of the building, cost over sixty thousand dollars for one quarter of, no, it was one sixteenth of the building, just one section. That, we can't afford that.
That came out of your personal savings?
Yeah. To do a roof, do you know, to do a driveway, do you know what it costs?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you tell everybody?
It's very expensive.
Yes.
How are we going to do that?
Do not...
Sidewalks. We have to pay for the sidewalks. How do we do those?
How is this impacting the value of your buildings?
Well, it's plummeting.
Okay.
I would say that's the only word to use for it.
I think the state has made a huge mistake. And I think that this board should relate that to the state.
I think prior to 2019, I think that I recognize some of the pieces here tonight that might have been here in 2019. And I think everyone was happier than, than they are now, I would say.
Including the tenants?
No, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you, appreciate you, appreciate you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Ken Nilson. Ken Nilson?
He did an emergency.
Join once?
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Do you know if he's going to make another meeting?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Okay. Next on our list is Mike Nuko. Do you represent an individual or an organization?
Organization.
What's the organization?
Westchester Owners Association. I'm going to use guys some, just some reference points.
Thank you. So, a little bit about me. I also am a principal broker of a company called Move Realty Advisors. I specialize in selling rent stabilized apartment buildings. I'm licensed in New York State, Connecticut, and New Jersey. And our office also manages some rent stabilized apartments as well, owned rent stabilized apartments. So I have a mixed experience. I deal with a lot of investors, people that kind of come to me and ask to help problem solve. And I also am a certified property manager, so I hold that designation as well. So just to kind of echo some of the points that are here, I feel like we come to this board, and this is the first time that I'm hearing some testimonies, which is pretty good, because sometimes we come to this board and we start just, you know, representing why we need increases and whatnot, which are all very valid, you know? All the expenses are really, truly going up. I mean, you folks are experiencing it yourself. I'm sure your insurance is going up on your cars, on your houses, or whatever it is. You go to the stores, you buy groceries, those are up, the tariffs are coming down, the pipes, and that's going to affect everyone, and it also affects us. So those are points that we all can relate to. But the root of the problem, which a few people mentioned, is the HSTPA of 2019. I mean, before 2019, if we came here and fought the fight that we tried to accomplish, and if we walked away with one percent, let's say, we could at least say, well, at least there's another avenue, right? Because we had vacancy bonuses, we had a proper IAI calculation, we had proper MCI calculation. So in principle, when someone's spending sixty thousand dollars for a portion of the pointing, which by the way, if you don't point the building, you're going to have leaks, and it's going to affect the tenants, and their quality of housing is going to get destroyed. And ultimately, we have the responsibility for these people. We're all here advocating why we need certain things, but why do we need those things? To repair and maintain these buildings for the people. And, you know, unfortunately, Brian Kavanaugh, Shelley Myers, Andreas Soukouz, they passed legislation in 2019, they're not real estate experts, they said what they thought felt right for the people for, and it was a result of a few bad actors, we're not going to, you know, ignore that. But as a result, they're hurting the people that we're trying to protect. So because they took away those vacancy bonuses and modified the law, we're solely relying on rent increases. This is the only avenue, that's it. So now, we have to go to those tenants that are residents of these buildings for ten, fifteen, twenty years, whatever the case may be, on fixed income, elderly people, whatever the case is, and we have to drop the hammer on them and say, hey, I am sorry, but your rent is going to go up whatever we decide, right? And in most cases, it still won't be enough. But had we had those vacancy bonuses, well, if you guys say, hey, we need to balance it, we can't hurt those individuals that we're trying to protect, well, then at least there could be an avenue to take an under-market rent to market. Now, if you look on page, it's what I gave you, just to give you a highlight of what I gave you. The first page just has some highlighted articles, and if you look at the first page, every single one of those articles are from May and rolling backwards to the past couple months, and every single one of them has rent stabilizing. The second pamphlet is the fair market rents for Westchester County. On page two of that pamphlet, it stipulates what the fair market rents are. As you can see, a studio, a studio apartment is twenty-two hundred and change, a one-bedroom is twenty-three and change, two-bedroom, twenty-five plus, three-bedroom, thirty-two plus. Now, when, when the woman that just spoke said her average rent was between eight hundred and...
Eighteen.
Eighteen hundred, that's below a studio. And eighteen hundred is what?
A one-bedroom.
A one-bedroom? A big one-bedroom. So a big one-bedroom in White Plains, right? A big one-bedroom in White Plains is getting eighteen hundred dollars when New York State says that should be twenty-three and change. There's a disconnect here. We have a problem. So New York State says, this is what we believe the fair market rents are, but our rent stabilization law does not allow us to take our current rents to market. So we're stuck in this world of low rent numbers, so when a potential vacancy takes place, and let's say it's whatever, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, whatever the case is, and that rent is way below market, we cannot, by virtue of the law, bring it to market. So now, we're just in this spiral, you know, holding pattern. But then, we have our good developers that come in, that Governor Hochul is advocating, and our local mayors are welcoming with open arms because it sounds good, because we need housing. But those guys, what are they doing? They're coming out here, they're sourcing land, it takes years for them to build a building, they're building Class A buildings with incredible amenities, and in most cases, the rents that they are yielding are above the fair market rents. And so the game is, we will allocate a portion of that property for affordable, and those affordable are going to be those Section A people that come in that have the vouchers that get to live there. So how does that help rent stabilization when we represent the majority of all the housing? If a rent stabilized tenant came in our office and said, hey, do you have a one-bedroom? I have a voucher for twenty-three hundred, whatever it says on the fair market rents, but my vacancy... but my vacancy unit that I have, the vacant unit, the legal rent is, let's say, a thousand or something underneath it, I can't even accept that. I can't even accept that new money, because legally, I'm supposed to charge the next person whatever the expiring rent is. So then you say, so all right, what's the big deal, we'll just take what you can. The answer's gonna be no, and I'll tell you why. If you rent a Section Eight, they require a rigorous inspection process. They come in there, they wanna make sure you got smoke detectors, adequate doors, faucet, whatever the case may be. So if you're a property owner and you don't have the funds to make ends meet, why am I gonna take Section Eight? When I know that I have to keep fixing that, and if I can't afford to fix it, and they come and they fail me, they're gonna abate the rent. So I'm better off just renting it to some Joe Schmo and hoping that they pay the rents, because there's no guarantee that they will, and with the hopes that I'm not gonna be sitting in housing court with everybody else that's in this packed housing court that's there daily.
Thank you, Mr. Nuko.
Did I hit my five minutes?
Yeah, you did.
I, I, I go for it.
No, I didn't wanna be disrespectful, and we wanna hear you, you definitely are passionate about what you're speaking about.
I do this, I do this often, I help a lot of people, they're calling me panicking. I sold, just very quickly, I sold a building, okay, in December, in the Bronx, right off of One Sixty-Eighth Street and Grand Concourse. It was a fifty-unit apartment building, we sold it for two point five, as a broker, I represent the seller, sold it for two point five million dollars, which was fifty thousand dollars per unit. Now, those same buildings were trading all day long for two hundred plus. The building sold pennies on the dollar, the owner hit the panic button, he had scaffolds in front of his building, he had to fix it, pointing, roof, all kinds, he couldn't afford it, he just exited out.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm a newbie, so...
Yeah, go for it.
And I'm familiar with Section Eight also. How would you propose to take a rent-stabilized apartment up to Fairmark? For persons who's living in there?
Many years?
Twenty years, or ten-plus years.
It's impossible.
You can't.
Well, I'm listening, I'm listening.
The question is, how do you take a rent...
How would you propose?
To take it to market?
Yeah.
Well, prior to the HSCPA, where they modified the calculation and they changed the whole math on how you could invest money into your apartment. Years ago, you could invest as much money as possible that you needed to invest, but the end game was that you could take it to market, okay? You're not, that same thirty thousand, so thirty thousand dollars today translates to about a hundred and seventy-five dollars...
On vacant apartments, right, not on an occupied apartment.
Excuse me?
Are you, are you, I'm saying, there's two ways. You have a vacant apartment, and you have apartment that's rent-stabilized, and one apartment that's occupied.
Correct.
Or you have two, two...
Are they both rent-stabilized in your city?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
How do you propose to take the apartments up to Fairmark?
So, the occupied unit is subject to this board, right? So whatever we agree on, that's what it is. But if you have a vacant unit, and had those laws not been modified, and let's say we want them...
They haven't, so, it's vacant right there.
So in twenty twenty-five, you can't do anything?
Right, so the short answer is you can't do anything.
You cannot.
Unless you're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars...
No, not even that, I don't think you can change a rent-stabilized unit to make it unsavable.
Oh, is that what your question is? I thought you were asking me how do you bring the right up?
Because you brought the analogy between Fairmark and rent-stabilized.
Oh, so that's the whole point, you cannot.
But what is, what's the answer?
The answer is, they have to change HSCPA.
I mean, for this, I mean, for this board.
For this board, unfortunately, you're gonna have to give a big increase, and the people you're trying to protect are the people you're gonna hurt, because of HSCPA.
I have a question. Where do you start?
But, but legally, it's not possible.
Right, it's just not.
Sorry, I missed the segue.
Mr. Nuko. We recognize that you cannot raise rents on a vacant apartment, that's wrong.
Yeah.
Okay. We also recognize that you're limited on MCI's and IAI's, as you pointed out, or the other prior people have pointed out. If you have to have an empty apartment, and it's, someone's been there thirty or forty years, what do you do? Do you leave it vacant, or what do you do about renovating it? And how can you pay for the cost of renovating the apartment and bringing it up to a rentable fashion?
So, the short answer is, what operators do is they say, okay, what is the total annual operating cost to run this building? Take that and divide it by however many units you have. And in most cases, it will, let's just say that it costs, you know, fifteen hundred dollars per unit to run your building annually. If the tent, if the unit that vacated was less than fifteen hundred dollars, then it doesn't make sense, keep it vacant. It's cheaper to keep it vacant than to try to find a way to fix it to rent it. So that's why we're, when you look on, if you do a simple Google search, how many warehouse units in, for rent-stabilized units in New York? There's thousands, like twenty, thirty thousand. I had a meeting with Andreas Sua-Cousins annually, from prior to the HSCPA being passed up until recent, and we talked about this. And she thought that she solved the problem by modifying the IAI's. And I told her last year, I said, madam, if a year from now, we still have a ton of warehouse units, will you revisit this? And she said, yes. I had a scheduled meeting with her in April, and she canceled the meeting. Okay, and this is real. So, the problem is that you have warehouse units, we have rent-stabilized units, ready to go. You don't have to build a building, you don't have to put a shovel to the ground, we could just modify the law and put them in circulation and help these people out.
Mr. Nuko, I have a question in regards to that transaction that you just completed, and you sold that building, and it was at an incredible discount, I mean, it was...
Yeah.
Discounted what, seventy-five percent?
Yes, exactly.
Is that usually a good thing for the tenants?
No, I mean, you know...
I mean, I know it's not a good thing for the landlord and the owner, but is it a good thing, or the bank that had debt on it, if that's the case, but what about the tenants?
It's bad, because leading up to that panic sale, you know, there had to be a period of distress, where you're trying, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you're trying to figure out how to make ends meet. You know, you don't just sell something for seventy-five cents on the dollar. You know, all of us have, for the most part, have cars. You could take a brand-new car, drive it off the lot, it's a depreciating asset. In time, you have to do oil change, change of brakes, change of tires, it depreciates. These properties are a depreciating asset. Aside from paying for your tax, water, electric, gas, fuel, the basic common fundamentals that you have to pay to run a building, you have to fix the building, if you don't fix it, it will deteriorate. So when all these problems are being presented, you know, there's so many other facets to this issue, where, you know, you have tenants that may not be necessarily paying, so you have that problem, and then you have repair issues, and who's paying the price? It's the people that we're trying to protect.
It's twenty-five percent on the dollar. And I said seventy-five percent.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
I just wanna make sure. And also, that is gonna be reflective in the comparables that these buildings are now gonna be going out tomorrow.
Right, I mean, I work with lenders...
Set a pattern.
Yeah, I work with lenders all the time, and they are not lending the way they used to. So, aside from the problems of going from three percent interest, and now you're faced with six percent, they're not valuing the properties anymore the way they used to, because when you, when, prior to the HSCPA, we keep going back to this, because that's the root of the problem. Prior to HSCPA, there was avenues to create value to the property. So if you bought a property years ago, prior to HSCPA, for let's say a million bucks, there was, there was a good pathway that it would be worth two million at some point in the future. Now, if you buy a building today, it's a negative asset, it's gonna go down, so nobody's touching them. I used to sell tons of buildings in our office, it's been radio silence. People calling me constantly, panicking, asking about questions, but nobody, nobody could sell, because nobody wants to buy.
I have a question.
Go.
The Department of Securities and Exchange Commission is looking at the vendors.
We have a silent sheet for people to address the board, so if you wanna speak, I'm more than happy to, okay, all right, thank you. So my question is, you've already addressed the issues with the HSTPA?
Right.
And we don't have any power with that?
I understand that.
But, what would you then, what percentage would you request for landlords?
Honestly, whatever I say, I know is not gonna get passed, and whatever I say will still not be enough. But personally, based on what I see, I would think a minimum of seven percent for one year, and at least eleven percent for two. And that may not even do the trick. And again, it's, it's, we collectively, I talk about HSCPA, because we need to have a voice. We should all work together, everybody in this room, and go after our government officials and tell them that what you did didn't work. It's okay, you tried it the same way you passed what you thought would be better, now we gotta do something to go backwards.
Are you saying eleven percent on top of seven percent?
Seven percent for a one-year renewal is what I'm proposing, and eleven percent for two-year.
Yes, Tamara?
The, do you have your microphone?
Hi there.
Okay.
The distressed building that you mentioned, did it have violations on it?
Ironically, not too many, but it did have violations. It was a, it was a building that was operated by a family for about thirty years. And, but they were going down a slippery slope, because they decided, they found like tracks in the foundation, they had a ton of issues with the roof that they had to address, and it was a fifty-unit building, it was no elevator, it was a walk-up. And, you know, it's the environment that we're in right now. The writing is on the wall, like, if you look at some of the headlines that I sent, I mean, you could look at it on your own time, but some of the most major real estate companies, I don't know if you heard of Related, they developed a ton of properties in New York. They were managing about thirty thousand, and I know this, I used to, I used to work for Deloitte prior to this, to my current position, and I was an auditor, and that was my client. Related management at the time was managing over thirty thousand rent-stabilized buildings, apartments in New York. And they actually have one over here on the corner of Riverdale, by the ShopRite, okay? And they're, the headlines is that they're unloading constantly, at like two thousand units at a clip, they're just selling off. And it's very troubling when Steven Ross, who's the CEO of that company, who also owns the Miami Dolphins, who's building a ton of real estate in Miami and in Florida, he's just getting out of New York, because New York, there's no path, and, you know, it blows my mind, because somebody like him, he's so powerful, he's a billionaire, you'd think he could pick up the phone and call Hochul and say, hey, what are you guys doing, let's fix this. He can't, so he's selling at a loss. And some of those headlines, it's just the tip of the iceberg, I just wanted to show you, like, every month, there's something there, and the headlines on rent stabilization is a problem.
Just on his point, I think as a board, I think everyone would benefit if you all got together and figured out a number that would please everyone, because it's easy to say no rent increase, but then, what happens? I think finding a number that both sides could do something with would create more progress, you know, the current legislation states.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Maria Villamia. Do you represent an organization, oh, I remember you, individual, right?
The Building and Realty Institute actually gave me a scholarship, kind of, where they funded my membership.
But you don't represent them in this discussion?
I guess not, I guess I represent myself, but I'm associated with them.
Can you spell your last name?
V-I-L-L-A-M-I-A. So, many of the board members have already heard my family history and how I came to own the building, but I know there's some new board members, I'm gonna repeat the story just so that you understand, because my situation's a little bit different than others. So my seventy-one-year-old mother and I, we live, own, and manage a hundred-year-old sixteen-family building in Southwest Yonkers. I'm here to discuss the situation facing the small landlord real estate industry, which is under attack. I'm not a giant corporation, I don't have outside investors. My mom relies on this property as our home in business, we live in the building, and we reinvest most of what we earn back into the building and local economy, hiring, a lot of minority-owned laborers, businesses, electricians, roofers, you know, all of the people that help maintain a building. But me and my mother are the super, we're the painters, the landscapers, the property manager group, because we cannot afford to hire full-time staff. My mother has no money saved for retirement, because our income from the building is so low compared to our expenses. We inherited the property from my father, who was a super in the Bronx after moving here from Cuba to escape communism and poverty. And he bought the building from the landlord that he worked for, there were mortgages given to him by him, because this was when the Bronx was burning, and tenants weren't paying rent, and landlords were trying to get rid of their failing businesses, which, we're trying to prevent our building from becoming one of those failing businesses. The only reason we were able to recover the building is because my dad, my uncle and my cousin were carpenters, and they helped rehab the building. I work full-time as a P.A. at Montefiore Hospital in the Bronx, and I also work overtime, and on my days off, I work at the building. I invest all of my leftover income into the building, because we're not able to collect enough rent to renovate. And I'm also not saving money for retirement. I'm taking the risk and hoping that things will change, and that my investment in the building will work out. Right now, unemployment in Westchester is at a record low, two point six percent, wages are up. But inflation, like everyone keeps mentioning, is high, and the increases that we get just cover inflation essentially, like the increase in our expenses every year. Not enough for me to renovate an apartment when someone damages it, when someone has been living there for over twenty years. So that's why I'm using my own money. Like everyone keeps saying, we don't have anywhere else to go. Your increase is the only increase that I can get. I can't get funding from banks, rent-stabilized properties are considered too high-risk. If I do get funding, the interest rate is really high, the repayment terms are short, and I don't wanna go into foreclosure again. So, this is the only method that I have to try to increase my income, other than using my own personal income. Like they mentioned, the thirty thousand dollars from the IAA doesn't cover much, there's no return on investment. And my rents are far below market rate. My average rent is fourteen hundred, it ranges from five hundred and fifty to nineteen fifty for two-bedroom apartments. And compare that to these new construction buildings, twenty-two hundred for a one-bedroom, and they get twenty-five-year tax evictions from the government, where they don't have to pay any property taxes. They get more help from the government than I do, when I'm giving apartments for much less than they are. I try to be a good landlord, I have a tenant that fell behind, instead of evicting him, I created a payment plan. He got a roommate, but he still couldn't keep up. I lowered the payment, the monthly payment, and I increased the time that he has to pay back. I try to work with my tenants, because if I try to evict them, they stop paying rent, and then it takes over a year before the courts deal with the issue, and then I lose over a year of rent, which is just unaffordable. Another tenant left mid-lease and had two large puppies destroy the apartment, and I still don't have enough money to fix up that apartment. So that apartment has been vacant for six months. That apartment could go to a family in need, but I'm trying my best. Right now, I feel like this business model doesn't work, but if we were to try to sell the building, after capital gains, taxes, realtor fees, the debt that we have, we wouldn't have much left. And this is my mother's home, this is my home, so to use whatever we got left to then start over somewhere else, having no money saved for retirement, I don't think it makes sense. So that's why we're holding on, and we're trying to survive. So I'm asking that the increase that you give this year, try to think about not just our expenses that we keep talking about, but giving us extra money that we haven't been able to get because of the pandemic, because of the small increases that have gathered over the years, because of all the changes in two thousand nineteen, so that us owners that own these really old buildings can actually modernize them. Because the tenants that live in my building, they're not just tenants, they're my neighbors, they're my friends. We all wanna live in a modern, nice apartment, but it's expensive. And there has to be a way that we come to a solution where we're able to afford it.
Thank you, I have a question. So, you mentioned that the BRI gave you a grant?
Not a grant, it's like a membership, they have an expensive membership fee.
Oh, so it's not that they gave you money, you paid them?
You paid to be part of the organization, and they have resources that help you. So someone in the organization paid for me to be a member, so that I could have access to these resources. But because I work so much, it's hard for me to utilize them, because I'm trying to just survive, and, I don't know, you have to have time. I think, like, for a lot of people, this is their full-time job, I have two full-time jobs essentially. And the building unfortunately gets neglected as my second full-time job, because my first full-time job is what's supporting the building, so I feel like that's more important. My mom, this is her full-time job, but she should be retired, or she should be semi-retired, and she's not, so she's slowing down.
So as a small homeowner, I mean, a small building, sixteen-family, you said?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So what would, I'm gonna ask you the same question, what would you feel is a fair increase?
I don't know.
Based on your experience?
I don't know, I haven't had the time to figure this out.
Okay. So anyone else, Tamara?
Have you applied for IAI's for any of your apartments?
I have, and I've gotten denied. I have and I've gotten denied. And I don't do it anymore because it's so time-consuming and I keep reapplying with whatever they ask me for. And, and then I keep getting denied. And so it's just not worth my time anymore. So that's why I'd rather just use my own money because it's less stress. And the stress from the building affects my mental health. So every time I get denied, every time I put so much effort into trying to do things the right way, um, it just, it makes me not want to keep going, so I just stopped.
It, it seems to me that if you have this scholarship with the B R I, maybe they would be able to assist you with understanding what you need to provide in terms of your paperwork so that it would be approved.
Yeah. I mean, every single time I apply, I realize on this date that I made for the future that I can try to fix for the future, but it's, that's how, that has passed already. Like, like submitting cash payments. It's very difficult to prove that. But a lot of laborers and companies give you a discount when you give cash payments. So when you're like struggling to make a repair quickly, you're just trying to get it done cheapest and quickly as possible that you can afford. Because otherwise, if I go and pay them with a check or some other way that, that they don't, that takes longer for them to get access to, then they're gonna charge me more and it's gonna take me longer to make that repair.
Okay. But you do realize that it's an option that you have that's available and?
And I, I'm trying, but like, they're busy too and that's not what they do. But, and I, and I have, I, I'm working forty hours a week plus an extra twenty-four hours plus time at the building. So then every, and I, and I also want to have my own personal time. So like, all these extra things just adds on more time that, that makes it difficult to manage. And when I've been denied so many times in the past, sometimes I just feel like it's not worth my time. Especially since the I A increase is thirty thousand and it costs me way more than thirty thousand to renovate an apartment that someone has lived in for like thirty years.
Well, it's up to fifty thousand if you are talking about some of the longer-term units. So there is some variation there. Et cetera, why not? Thank you.
I have a question. Um, first of all, that's quite a story and congratulations on keeping and holding on to the building this long. You guys are doing a great job. Um, I'm sure your expenses have all gone up, you know, uh, like all the rest of these landlords in this, in this, uh, room tonight. Um, along with not being able to collect rent enough to be able to afford the operations of the building, you've had to now take those increases on the chin. That's come from your own personal savings. And it's also the improvements or, let's put it, not even improvements, but the work that you needed to do on the building has come from your own personal savings. And that's impacted your ability to be able to retire, your mom, being able to retire. And obviously, I can see it's a very emotional, um, matter for you. If the board approves a reasonable rent adjustment this year, how would you, how would that help you continue to provide stable, quality housing for your tenants while securing the financial sustainability for not only the building but yourself?
It would allow me to fix the apartments faster and get people in them quicker. And also just help me get better quality tenants. Because, I mean, the difficulty is, is when you don't have a nice apartment, you don't get good quality people. And then it's, it's pointless to rent to them. You end up spending so much on lawyers, it affects your mental health, went to court all the time fighting. So I think just, it would be better for everyone. My current tenants who are good, the new tenants that I get who can be better. And just less stress on us so that we could hire more help. And then I could actually like apply for these things because I have more people helping me and I could spend my time doing something that only I can do as opposed to like cleaning or painting or whatever else I'm doing that I could hire someone else to do.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alan Zaretsky. Can you put landlords or individual?
I'm the A O A C.
A O A.
Good evening, board, and thank you for allowing me to speak again. I've appeared before you probably for the last ten years, each time we've been here. And I commend you. You have a very difficult job to do, especially because you are the ones holding the hot potato at the end of the game. New York State has declared war on the real estate industry. My colleagues and associates have talked about the laws that have been passed. You didn't pass them. You can't change them. You can talk about it and help to that, but you are the ones that, um, at the end of the day, are the only hope that we have to pick up some of these costs. Not all, some of these costs that keep in, incurring. My costs, I'm, I'm probably one of the bigger landlords in Yonkers. Okay? I have five buildings, four of which are in Yonkers. I'm a good landlord. I know all my tenants by name. I have over nine-hundred of them. I know them by name. When they call my offices, they get a person. After hours, they get a person. If we continue down the path that we're doing, you're not gonna see many of these people that alone. You're gonna see corporations who don't care or they're gonna be government though. And those are the two worst landlords that you have. The people that you're hurting are the people that you're trying to protect. The E T P A buildings or rent-stabilized buildings are the ones that are the oldest and need the most help, yet they're the ones that are being controlled the most and limited the most. That's a problem. That's a big problem. Again, not your doing, but the laws keep passing and making it harder to comply with, to conduct with, to abide by. You've got, we mentioned section eight. On top of the costs that are involved in that, each section-eight agency has their own protocol and most of them are in contradiction to the E T P A protocol. And so you can't balance it out. They insist upon only one-year leases. The E T P A says we have to offer two-year leases. They limit section-eight tenants to one-year leases. They insist upon their own lease, which because of their paperwork and their regulations, often cannot coincide with the E T P A lease. And we're in a, 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 a quandary of which, which order we abide by. The Yonkers court system is a mess. It creates more problems because you have tenants that are allowed to abuse the system and there are landlords that abuse the system too. But you have tenants that are allowed to abuse the system that there's so much money lost that could be gone back into these buildings. The laws change. You force the outlawing of number two oil and number four oil and where possible, force people to gas. Large investments to do that, the cost of that. Now Con Ed, who is one of the most poorly-run companies I have ever seen in my life, they just come and they ask for double-digit increases and they get them. And as was said before, the cost to bring the, the gas or electric to the building has tripled. And there's no rhyme or reason for it. They're just... I have one building, um, in Way Plains. I converted the building. Con Edison messed up. They billed me wrong. They were billing me, it was a hundred-and-sixty-two-year building. They billed me like it's a one-family home. I emailed them, I called them, I sent them, sent them by mail. Nothing. Four years go by. I know a bill's coming. They send me a bill for a million dollars. And they put my credit out there, make my credit bad. The law says they're only allowed to go back two years when it's their mistake. They don't tell you that. They just give you the big bill and fight with you. And after two years of fighting with them and saying, I want to know how you calculated it, et cetera, et cetera, we finally settled it at a reasonable number. Now, I knew it was coming. I've been in this business a long time, so I put aside what I guesstimated it to be. And then once we did that, I still had to go out of pocket to make up the difference. Plus, those numbers are the numbers that are given to you to help you figure out what a fair increase is. And I can't document the number because Con Ed is giving me fallacious figures. It's just a, it's a catch-twenty-two all around. And unfortunately, you guys are the last ones holding the hot potato. There's no place else for us to go. And if you don't pass a reasonable increase, not exorbitant, a reasonable increase based on the facts and the numbers, you're not gonna see most of these people here. They're gonna sell or be forced to sell or walk away. And that's, doesn't help their tenants, it doesn't help anybody else. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you mentioned that the section-eight protocols, um, they contradict the H S T P A protocols. Could you give me an example of that?
The E T P A, absolutely. Um, E T P A, we have to send out notices no more than ninety days, no less than sixty days in advance. And the tenant has up to thirty days to comply. If we don't comply, we can't get the increase. If the tenant doesn't comply, it's okay. They, they can get it retroactive. The section-eight, not all of them, but most of them are now insisting upon sixty days prior to lease expiring, having the lease signed by the tenant so that they can do their paperwork timely and issue the tenant, uh, letter that says what the tenant portion is and what the landlord portion is. I can't do that. The E T P A law says the tenants have, once they get it, they, you know, they do it at the last minute, actually. And so they're not giving us our increases. They're then turning around and saying, okay, well, we'll give it to you, but we're gonna start it three months after that, after the tenant gives us a notice. That's not in line with the tenant lease, that's the E T P A lease. So it, it's just impossible to do. That's one good example. Any other questions?
Yeah, if you were to, I'm, I'm just asking, um, landlords, basically, if you were to ask for an increase, what would it be?
Every year, you guys ask me that and every year I respectfully, um, give my, my, my comments. And I try to be reasonable on them. It doesn't work. I'm gonna respectfully decline to, to offer it. Okay? And again, I thank you all. I know it's hard, but you are the last line that we can come to. If you guys don't do the right thing, you're gonna lose everything. Yes, sir?
Mr. Zaretsky, um, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked a, a couple of the other landlords. On a percentage basis across the board, what has your operating expenses increased this year? Main categories, real estate taxes, insurance, utilities?
Excluding, um, insurance and, um, interest and amortization. Okay? Um, I'm in my office every day. I go and look at these things myself. So I've been able to keep it reasonable. It's been about ten percent. However, when you factor in the interest increases, which has gone up fifty percent, and then you factor in the insurance, which has gone up twenty percent for less insurance. I don't know if anybody's aware, but there's really only two or three companies that write insurance on residential multifamily in New York State. New York State has driven everybody else away. So they just set their own numbers. So I was able to only get a roughly twenty percent increase in my insurance policy, but it was for half the coverage that I used to get. So I'm paying more for less. Similarly, with Yonkers, the taxes going up, Yonkers has, um, changed the way that they collect sanitation. Okay? So I'm getting less service and paying more. And I still have to supply the service to my tenants. It's a lose-lose. You're hurting the very people that you're obligated to try and protect.
You mentioned interest expense. I assume you have debt on the, on the property?
Yes.
Okay. Has any of that debt reset recently, either prior to this meeting or is any debt set?
In the last two and a half years, I've had to recast the three properties.
I would assume the rate went up.
The rate went up by fifty percent on two of the properties and on one of them, I had to go out of pocket because the, no one else would lend on the property. And, um, uh, the appraisal that they came up with was less than what it was previously. So I had to add money to renew the, the mortgage. I had to run out of my pocket to renew that.
I know, okay.
Or walk away from the property, which I, I don't want to do.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Withers.
Oh, I think he, Mr. Withers is on the board.
I've done enough speaking tonight.
Oh, why'd you put your name here?
I'm, I, because it was my first time and that's where I thought I put it.
So sorry. Um, next speaker is Nick Marco.
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 Good evening. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for your service. I'm not gonna repeat what was said earlier. I'm a small property owner. I represent myself, own a couple of properties. I'm an immigrant. I'm a war refugee. I was a tenant for many, many years. I understand applied the tenants, um, phase, but I'm here to talk about some basic numbers. It was mentioned Con Ed. Well, our Con Ed bill is just the first three months of this year is up about thirteen percent from last year. If you compare it to two years ago, it's over twenty percent. Uh, insurance was mentioned. I would like to share with you, year-over-year, our insurance is up fifteen percent. Last two years, our insurance is up sixty-three percent. From two thousand twenty-one to now, our insurance is up a hundred and six percent. So last five years, rent increases have been, for one-year leases, zero percent, point-five percent, two percent, one percent, and two and a half percent. Straight line is six percent, so these numbers don't add up. Logical question is, why am I in this business? I hold another job, I have a master's degree and bring that money in to support these properties. But every tenant I know by name, they have my cell phone number. Just the other night, a couple had problems. They called me at one o'clock in the morning and I served as a shrink, trying to make peace between the warring parties itself. Um, I do the painting, I do the cleaning. So what we had to do is pretty much reduce our expenses to a very minimum. There's nothing we can do about Con Ed. There's nothing we can do about taxes going up, what, another two-point-eight-five percent in Yonkers? There's nothing about a hundred and six percent insurance going up. So you've heard this a bunch of times. You guys are the only option left for small property owners. I would implore all of you to take down this name, John Paulson. He's a hedge fund manager. If these increases have come in at one, two, or three percent, four percent for one-year leases, you'll make John Paulson very happy. At some point down the road, he'll buy a lot of these properties, have a management company in the Philippines and somewhere offshore where tenants are not gonna have an ability to speak to one of the property owners, call someone at one o'clock in the morning and deal with the problem, but they'll get an automated message for option, for paint job, option one, for this, option two, for that, option three. I'm sure you guys had to deal with a few banks. You know how happy it is to deal with someone offshore. But we're trying to protect the tenants. We're actually doing everything we possibly can for our tenants because if you don't have good tenants, you don't have an income. So we appreciate our tenants, we respect our tenants. That's why they have my cell phone number. That's why they know my kids, they know everything I do. I have a tenant who pays me six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month in rent. If you do a one percent increase, that's six dollars and fifty cents a month. What could be done to six dollars and fifty cents? That probably doesn't cover our, um, let me not go there. I have tenants who are paying me eight hundred dollars. I have tenants who are paying me nine hundred dollars. They've been with us for a very long time. They're great people. But I'm also not stupid. I'll keep putting money in. If you had a problem, Con Edison, similar to what the gentleman said, they underbilled us, they came back. So we had to take money out of our own pocket and pay Con Edison. We had to pay the insurance. Um, didn't have the money to pay. Insurance broker was very nice. He said, we'll give you a loan of nine percent. So I had an option, taking a nine percent loan from the insurance broker or digging my own pockets from the other job that I have to pay for these operating expenses. It may not sound real to you because it sounds like everyone is saying the same thing, but this is a real problem. If small landlords can survive, hedge funds will come in, buy these properties. They'll have an army of lawyers. They'll dislocate you guys and they'll also dislocate small property owners. So reasonable, I'm anticipating the question, what's a reasonable increase? I know it's not going to happen, but New York City had some numbers released that operating costs were close to seven percent just to stay at the level of last year. So anything less than that number, you'd pretty much bring every single person here in a deeper hole.
Just with all due respect, did you see the reaction that what they, what they ended up having? I mean, you know. But again, what would, what would your numbers be for one year and a two-year?
Uh, I'll repeat what somebody else said earlier. Anything less than seven percent for one year, it's really not helping us. But I know you guys have a hot potato, so you have to figure out what the balance is. But you'll see less and less of us in the future years. Sure. Sure.
How many buildings do you own and how many apartments are altogether?
About 30, two properties. Two properties, about 30 apartments. So I'm definitely a very small potato.
Where is located?
Yonkers. Any other questions?
It sounds like this owning these buildings has really impacted your ability to be able to manage retirement. And you hold a master's degree. I'm sure you're very good at what you do. So you basically have not only this business that you work in, these 30 units, but also what you do for a living, right? How is owning these two buildings impacting that living and your personal life? If you don't mind me asking.
I absolutely appreciate, appreciate the question. I escaped civil war and I survived about three hours. And I was a tenant for many, many years. I've got a great relationship with my tenants. I love them all. Most of them are great people. They've had some deadbeats, that's a different story. So to me, I'm also providing a service to them. So I'm taking money from my other job and providing a service for them. My retirement that was there when the units, when buildings were selling at a much higher price several years ago, that's all wiped out. We had to refi one of the properties. We had to do the same thing, put money in. The bank came in, the appraisal was much lower level. So we had to put money in. For now, I'm doing it more as a service to my tenants because I know these people. And I feel bad for them because I've seen some horror stories out there. They show me pictures where they're coming from and so. But in reality, I'm in my 50s. I can probably do this for a number of years. My knees are starting to give up. So I don't know how much longer I can do it. But it, it's really not just a numbers question for me right this moment, but it will get to that point. Right now, it's the relationship with these people that I've known. I've been a tenant who's been, first property bought in 1999. I've got a number of people who've been with us since 1999. And they pay 650, 800, 850 or so. They've got very low rents. In reality, by being good landlords, we shot ourselves in the foot because they did not move and they stayed there. We never received individual apartment improvements and vacancy bonuses and all that because people stayed there. And let me also break down the IAI number for you in a very simplistic term. That's an interest-free loan you're giving to someone to collect over the next 30 years when the inflation rate is much higher. So you're guaranteed to lose money on that. I mean, if you spent $30,000 today or $50,000 to upgrade your apartment, inflation is going to be greater than 0%. 100% probability you lose your money on that. Again, I'm repeating. So the $30,000 or $50,000 that you spent on run rate in the apartment, you're guaranteed to lose money on that investment because you only collected that principal. Back to inflation is going. And you had a question earlier about banks or so. There've been reports earlier this year that the Securities and Exchange Commission is looking after New York banks that have exposure to rent stabilized buildings and assessing this risk may or may not be going concerns. That's another government agency looking at what's happened to the industry and saying, this is an in-depth bet and not looking good. Sure.
I appreciate your honesty and your testimony today.
Thank you.
I absolutely do. So this question is coming from a heartfelt place because I really want to understand something. You say that your tenants are like your friends, your family. They call you, you know them. If we pass 7% or higher, how will these people be impacted that you know?
Some of them will be impacted, absolutely. They may have to take a roommate, they may have to take another job because the lady says she's been working longer hours or so. So some will definitely be impacted. But also have a tenant who has a two-bedroom, kids have moved on and he uses one of the rooms as the Airbnb. He's definitely making more money on the apartment than I'm making in the building.
You can't stop him.
The attorney laughed at me.
It's the law. It's the law.
There's nothing we can do.
The law says that if I rent to you and the day after I rent to you, you can go on the street and you can pick up anybody you want and bring them in as your roommate. I'm only allowed to ask what their name is. I'm not even allowed to get any information about them. And then they have every right to that apartment that you have when I have no information on you. That's the law.
Even with a rent stabilized apartment?
Even with a rent stabilized apartment.
Yes. Nothing we can do.
That's the law.
And the room, the background checks and the credit checks and stuff like that?
Can't you do that?
Yeah.
It's the law.
At least you can wave your screen and tell us.
What do you charge for that apartment?
For?
For that apartment with that gentleman or person?
$649.
What's he renting, what's he renting that other room out for?
I would not know, but it's definitely more than $65 a night.
It could be 500, it could be $500 a week.
Probably. I was gonna, I thought I was gonna say night. No, not at night, but it could be $500 a week.
Say if it's $500 a week.
Because I know rooms are being rented for over $1,000, so.
Well, I know that recently there have been changes in the Airbnb law. I just looked it up. Yeah, and actually, they restrict certain activities. It bans the rental of the entire unit and requires hosts to register with the city.
Is that Yonkers as well or is it New York City?
Oh, okay.
New York City.
Yeah, New York City.
Yeah, I'm not questioning you, just.
That's Airbnb, not, you're my tenant, you're my roommate.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, I, like I said, I really do appreciate your honesty. And that's where the question was really coming from because you know these people, we don't. And if they would be impacted negatively, you would know that.
Yeah, absolutely, impacted negatively. But the question is, would they be okay with me providing the service? They can call me at 1:00 in the morning? Or Mr. Paulson buying the property, having a management company in the Philippines and good luck getting anything done? And then trying to go after Mr. Paulson and have an army of lawyers to fight back and still prevail?
Totally understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will invite any other members of the public to speak. Sure, put your name here. Do you represent yourself as an individual or as an organization?
Right now, I'm an individual.
You know what I mean.
I know.
Okay. So you're an individual owner?
Yes.
Okay. And for the record, this is Alex. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Menarche.
Menarche, thank you.
Can you spell the last name, please?
M R N A C A J.
Thank you.
There's that?
Yes.
I'm not going to reiterate everything everybody says, it's just going to blow you. A big problem with what's been going on is the moment they removed the vacancy rate. That was a big fall for every small landlord. Before, you were able to fix up the apartment. At least you had some kind of increase going there where you're giving somebody a new apartment. Now, it's come down to patchwork and paint. There just is no increase there anymore. It's basically the same increase you're given as if the tenant was already living there and on a renewal rate. A few of the years, we had rent freezes. Westchester, I think it was one year, we had a zero for one year and a zero for the two-year. If I was right, then why not take the two-year? It doesn't make any sense to take a one-year. You're guaranteed no increase in two years. That was a huge problem. But there's some other stuff on there that some of the people didn't realize. Like you have, I'm sure everybody's had squatter that they've had to deal with once in a while. And trying to get them out is a disaster. And the cost just legally to get them out, they totally have more rights than the landlords. You can't call Con Ed and turn off the Con Ed signal. Con Ed won't do it. If I own the apartment and I'm just using it to fix it up, they'll turn it off in a second. Somebody doing some good gets turned off. Somebody, they know that it's not going to pay them. They get to stay there because they're going to use some excuse that they're on a ventilator or whatever. Same thing, somebody was bringing up the ETPA leases with the Section 8. That's a big problem then too. Section 8 basically goes by the thinking that their contract supersedes our lease. And our lease is the ETPA lease, that's from the state. It says they can't have dogs. They come back and they bring in a dog. You have to start a holdover case that costs over $2,000. And at the end, they'll come back and say, well, the dog was just visiting. It doesn't even live here. There's a bunch of stuff, but again, I don't want to keep going into the stuff that was already mentioned. Insurance was brought up earlier. One property, my insurance almost tripled. And it wasn't anything that I was knowing for. Somebody said that they slipped and fell on the sidewalk, which had cameras there. And by the time the paperwork came to us, the DVR didn't go back to catch this person's name that they fell there. Being deposed by the attorney, it turned out that this guy already has, he had some conditions prior with the injuries that he's claiming. So he's getting a free ride. An insurance company put a reserve of $325,000 aside. So my insurance dropped me and I had to go elsewhere. No other insurance company would take me. And the insurance from that building went from $29,000 to $67,000. And it's still not settled because it still at some point has to go to trial. So this is like eating into what used to be some sort of a profit. And it's just not there anymore. Patchwork is going to be the new thing. There's not going to be any more fixing up. I used to give tenants a refrigerator, a brand new one, when I was able to afford it, if they were a very good tenant. Now it's like I'm looking, I ask around who's got like good used refrigerators and stoves, just to try to save money.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions? Okay.
Would you be good enough to spell your name again, sir?
First or last?
Last, sir.
M R N A C A J.
M R N A C A J.
Oh, very good.
M R N A C A J?
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay. And you said how many buildings, sir, and how many units?
Uh, four.
Four buildings?
Yes.
How many total units?
Uh, 56.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Location?
Bronx, Melbourne and Yonkers.
At this point, I'm going to invite any other speakers from the public.
I just have an answer to the question where you asked how.
Are we allowed to rebut? I mean, she can come up.
You're the chair.
I asked it to the specific gentleman, yes.
I can answer like how it would affect my tenant.
Well, do you consider your tenants the same as his friends and family, people that you know?
I lived in the building where my tenant lived.
Are we all ready for that? Okay.
So they're my neighbors and they are my friends because I see them every day.
No, I'm just, he had actually said that. So I, the reason I asked him the question is because if someone is your friend or family or you consider them that, you would know if something was a hardship to them or not. If it would be 7%, 15%, if that would be too much for them, if that would put them out of the building? Would they be able to eat? Would they have to move?
No, we're not putting them out of the building, but just the flip side of that. The question is, I've also lent them money a lot of times. There've been cases where one of my tenants did not have enough money to buy food. And I can show you a bankier notes and stuff and he did not charge me a whole lot just to be nice. And used the phone and sent a little bit of money and lent them money a number of times and now I'm creating rent for the rest of my life.
Right. So that's why I asked him, he just seemed so open. But yes, you can feel free to answer the question. So the question was, could we rephrase? Yes, if you know these people as your friends and family and if we passed an increase, because most people were saying 7% or higher, would they, would they be negatively impacted?
No, because the ones that have stayed there long-term that are good tenants have increased their income significantly over the years. But they've lived there for so long that their rent has stayed very low and they stay there that long. Because if they were to move out, they would end up with a lot less disposable income. So for example, one of my mom's friends from the temple just moved here from Thailand with her two teenage daughters years ago, two, over 20 years ago. Daughters went to college. One of them got an MBA. She's got a great job working for Pepsi. She still lives there with her mother because she has so much money left over. She gets to drive a Mercedes-Benz, go on five-star vacations. She could afford to pay more and she's offered to pay me more, but I legally cannot charge her more. I have another tenant who inherited the apartment from a parent who retired and moved to DR. He's a pharmacist. Him as well, he lives a great lifestyle because his rent is $850. And he's staying there even though to live in a much more modern apartment because he saved so much. But he could definitely afford an increase. So I could.
So out of everybody there, you think everybody can afford going there, it would not be a hardship?
Yes.
Or is it just these few people?
No, out of everyone there, because all the people that had hardship, unfortunately, no longer live there.
But also. Do you do income checks as well?
No. I mean, when they first move in, yes. But after that, what's the point? Like, I can't.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because you're, what you're saying that they've had increases in their salaries.
They're my friends, so I know, we talk about things.
Wait, can I say something?
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, but you know, there is a protocol.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry.
I know we've left it a little open, but you know, we do have to follow.
Can I just touch on what she said earlier in her first?
Well, she asked a question.
Okay, sorry.
Do you mind if she responds to that? So you're going to get up and talk, I have to?
No, I just wanted to ask, do I need to get up fast? I can. It was really what you said earlier, which touches on what you asked, which is what we do as well. The good tenants that can't afford their rent, we often put on a payment plan, which if there was a rent increase and there was a tenant who couldn't afford the increase, they would go on a payment plan, which is what you said in your first, whatever you want to call it. And that's what I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Two questions. Tamara, I think you had your hand in.
Yeah, I was saying, it appears that you may have, because if you work as a PA and so forth, you may not have all the prowess to manage a building, the paperwork. In other words, if you're paying cash, it should have a receipt.
I have a receipt and I submitted, but they want to see that the money was taken from a bank account. So.
Well, okay, well, okay, well, I was saying, okay. Have you considered that taking one of your apartments yourself[1641.54] And let that person be the super who can do the work?
I've done that, and then they did not fix up the apartment as they promised. And they tried to get me to switch the apartment with a super that was being fired from another building. And then that landlord tried to bully me into putting that super in there and replacing that person. So I realized from the beginning, this person moved in with that intention because that landlord probably had a super that sucked, but he couldn't evict him. And so-
Really?
So he got, he brought back this super that he had hired before from Puerto Rico. This super moved into my apartment telling me that he was gonna work as a maintenance person for this other landlord and then promised me all these repairs that he was gonna make. So I chose him over other tenants that I had, like all the other potential tenants that I had. He didn't make those repairs and then he went on to bully me until I just kept asking him to leave, kept asking him to refuse to allow this other super to come from this other landlord. And eventually he left, but he didn't do what he promised and I let him move in and I gave him a discount. So I don't do that anymore. Now, if anyone's gonna do any work, I'm gonna pay them because I can't trust that they're gonna keep their word. They're incentivized by the payment.
Ms. Stewart?
I just wanted to check my recollection because if I recall correctly, when you first came and spoke to us, you said that there were a number of years where you had not, even though the rent increases had been passed, you had not been passing the law necessarily to your tenants?
No, yeah, I have not, that's why, like, the lowest is five hundred and fifty. Because that tenant no longer lives there because that apartment got condemned. But, I mean, when those tenants are far behind in their rent and they're on a payment plan, how am I gonna increase it when they can't even pay what they're paying? So I have two apartments that are condemned for that reason. Because then that tenant saw that I was renovating another apartment, wanted their kitchen and their bathroom renovated. I can't afford that on five hundred and fifty. I tried to make a deal with them where they pay a portion of the renovation. They didn't wanna do that and the tenant had a mentally ill son who decided to take a hammer and break all the tile in the bathroom and flood it and to try to like bully me into fixing it and then ended up just having the bathroom sagging. So the inspector came and condemned it. And that apartment is just sitting vacant because I don't have the money to fix it. And that apartment got condemned along with the apartment below it, the people below it had to move out because their ceiling flooded constantly.
But that... Am I accurate in saying, and this is again based on a recall from, I think, when you came last year, that there were years when even though guideline increases may have been passed, you did not choose to pass those on to your tenants?
No, but because I wasn't living in New York at that time, I was in college.
Okay, I just wanted, I just, first of all, I mean, I really do listen to what people said and I remember that and I, because I realized that your rents are really low, even by rent stabilized.
Yeah, that's the reason why.
And I want people to understand that part of the reason is because even when this board passed increases, she didn't necessarily pass them on to her tenants and that's part of why her rents are as low as they are right now.
But like they said, like, a three percent increase on five hundred and fifty dollars is not much. So even if I had, over the years, it still would be low. And part of the reason it's hard for us to do that is because we're short-staffed. So we're not doing everything properly because we're just trying to survive. So with more money, I could hire a property manager, I could hire more help to actually do things the right way and get the maximum out of the apartments and fix them up as fast as possible.
So I just have a comment.
Sure.
Thank you, again, appreciate your honesty because you don't really have to be that honest and the school is that in front of everybody, so I really do appreciate it. And your comment about providing people with a way to pay their rents was very helpful because hearing that makes me feel a little bit better. I would just hope everyone would be as generous as you and you allowing people the opportunity to have a payment plan. Because that would be important to some people versus, you know.
Yeah, right.
Our intent in having these meetings is not to villainize landlords.
Conversation.
It's a conversation, it's a decision, a very difficult, often very difficult decision for the public members. And we wanna hear all sides. So do you wanna sign and come up and speak?
No, I'm speaking in Melbourne.
Okay.
But it's just, I don't think there's a landlord that does not, given their tenant, the payment plan.
Okay.
Yes. And thank you for also humanizing the situation for us because these are very human stories you're giving us. So our next speaker is George, I'm sorry, Nukoto?
Yes. So I was staying silent, listening to everyone speak and a couple of things that were mentioned during the discussion motivated me to get up. Number one, I have to say that I have five children. My parents came here as immigrants, I'm an immigrant, I lived in an apartment. I went to St. Mary's School, I used to leave St. Mary's School on South Broadway. I used to walk up to South Broadway, went across the street from St. Joseph's to the car dealership. I used to sit by my father's toolbox, he was a car mechanic. Okay, stayed there, went home, my mother came home after school because she was a teacher's aide. We had dinner together and the next day, repeat. Nothing was given to us. We learned values through hard work, through respect, through discipline. And we carry those values to our family, to our children. My father was an entrepreneur, he did start a small building and I also took out a small building also. Could have five kids and to me, that's a retirement or some form of education, finance to pay for my kid's education. We're proud landlords, we like our tenants, we don't dislike our tenants. When we go into a building, we know what the rents are, we know how many units there are, we know where the building is located. Nothing is a surprise. When we take over a building, we're not saying, okay, we got this building, how am I gonna evict these people? No, absolutely not. As a matter of fact, some of the tenants that I have, my kids eat clothes, instead of throwing them away, I bring them to the people and I'm like, this is good clothes, my wife washed them, she folded them, enjoy them for your kids. And these people, I'll call them right now, they thank me. And you know what, because it's the right thing to do, we respect our tenants. We don't look to evict people, we don't look to displace people, we're not monsters. However, I gotta say that we have been allegedly, we've been accused of displacing families, which, that's not a fair statement. Not a fair statement, we don't displace families. Other people displace families, other people, the people that sell the weed, that sell the drugs, that commit these crimes, that we're powerless against the court, because when we go to court, order to show cause, order to show cause, order to show cause. We're powerless against the people. The bail reform was revisited at least twice. The rent laws have never been revisited, have not been revisited. The system is broken, it's not your fault, okay, it's not. But in all fairness, there are people on this board that have voted zero, year after year after year after year, zero, okay? They, you know who they are. And I'm not trying to call people out, but what I'm saying to you is that you let the situation, or let me rephrase that because I'm not here to, to, to say that or come at you negatively. But the system has never allowed the rents to increase as it should have, year after year. And because it hasn't, now we're in a situation where everybody's in a panic button because you realize that the conditions in the real estate market has gotten very bad. So when you ask the questions, how much is the percentage? Like everybody said, the percentage can never be enough to make us survive, it won't. But the problem is that I saw an article in the New York Post this past Saturday and the article read that these ETPA apartments are starting to go through foreclosure. The banks don't even want the keys, so they're going to the auction lot. Now, these apartments are getting condemned because they're staying without services and utilities. So these apartments are now being, the buildings are being vacated. So these apartments that we're trying to protect and preserve by being here are being lost. They're being lost because landlords can't afford to maintain them. These numbers are real, Con Edison is a monster, a monster, they have shut my gas off because they came down the street and they took brand-new gas service, they shut it off. Six months later, they turned it off, when? In the middle of the winter. And you go to Con Edison, you're like, what happened? Oh, the gas service is leaking. This is after three days trying to find it because you can't talk to a real person in Con Edison. And then I went, well, you put the gas service in, you should know it's leaking. Oh, but you know what, sir?
Mr. Nukoto, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay.
So I just wanna refute one thing that you said, that this board repeatedly gave zero percent?
No, no, I didn't say it's board, I said some people.
Oh, I see, and the negotiation for the rent guideline, okay.
Yes.
Because we only technically in the last, I don't know, twenty years, gave one time zero percent, that was during COVID. Two, oh, it's, okay, all right.
But you know, in all, in all fairness, you know, some of the-
In the last twenty years?
Yeah.
Several times.
Okay.
Several times.
Well, COVID was the one that I'm aware of and I've been-
One year was, it was zero and a zero for one year and two.
Right, that was the COVID year, that's the same one I'm referring to.
Another quick comment, the IAIs at fifty percent, why do we have to pay DHCR one percent fee to process the application?
That's not something we can answer.
I understand, it's not your fault. IAIs is not your problem, MCIs is not your problem, okay? HSTP is not your problem, they are our problem. But we do ask of you at least to help with the increases because the increases is something that you have control over.
Well, if you were to give an increase for one-year and two-year leases, what would your recommendation be?
Like everyone in this group has said, we're not avoiding the question. We are so far behind negatively that even if we did get eight percent on a one-year and twelve percent on a two-year, we're still so far behind our insurance, our Con Edison. We're all paying Con Edison, you guys pay Con Edison, you saw what your bills did this year. You know, I mean, and I have to tell people, you know, Santiago, I'm sorry, I'm only giving you sixty-eight degrees, but Mr. Nukoto, it's freezing here, we're cold, touch my hand. My job isn't to heat your hands, my job is to heat the air in this apartment. If you're on blood dinners, if you're older, if you're thin, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I can't afford, because insurance doesn't wanna give me a break. The loss runs, I got zero loss runs, zero, my insurance went up twenty-five percent.
You would agree that there has to be an increase? It may not be that you get a five-hundred dollar per rent and you charge them, you get a seven percent, that's not very much, but you gotta size somewhere, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, so the other part that we cannot control relies on having the people sitting here in the post and talk with those who do have that opportunity to make a difference, to change. Nothing we can do about it.
No, not at all, but we're here to all express our concerns and to process it and take it for its face value. But I gotta say, as a property owner, we have less resources, we have less consideration for aid than an individual that could go to apply for subsidy. You know, we don't get that consideration because we're stereotypes, rich, bad landlord. I'm here, I'm not home with my five kids, helping them with their homework or sitting with them or having dinner with my kids. I'm here because I'm concerned enough about our livelihood.
All people who get subsidy are not bad people.
No, no, sir, they're lovely people, that didn't come out of my mouth. I didn't, that didn't come out of my mouth.
Yeah, I know, sir.
No, 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 what I'm saying to you is that we, as property owners, cannot go and get some type of assistance or free, you know, money or any type of subsidy. We can't because we're a property owner. An individual could show hardship, they could qualify for a Section Eight. I mean, majority of my tenants are subsided tenants, they don't want to be people.
But you have to admit, in the environment that we are right now, even those people are gonna have a hardship this year. So it's, you know, it makes our job even more difficult, as we'll hear from the tenant side.
And I agree, but you know, sometimes people don't like to be told what they don't wanna hear. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to tell people that there has to be an increase because we have, our job is to give them a nice clean building. Our job is to give them a safe building, our job is to give them services. You know, when all of this dust settles, where the anger of, oh my God, the increase, when they come home and the building is heated and it smells like pine soil and the garbage is clean and everything, people appreciate it, they appreciate it, no one wants to be told they have to pay more. I don't wanna be told that I have to pay more, I don't. But at the end of the day, I mean, I have to, I have to.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I'm, I think that's all the comments that we're gonna hear tonight. Is the next meeting a public meeting?
It is a public meeting. The room is a little bit tight, but it is a public meeting. And it's on Thursday at seven o'clock in White Plains DHCR offices.
So it is a public meeting?
Yes.
Communication is public.
Correct, there's no public comments.
It's just observation.
Correct.
You're welcome.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Stecker, research and analysis meeting is public?
It's a public meeting, yes.
It's public and anybody to attend, but they can't talk.
Yeah, so we're, and at that meeting, we really need to refrain from making public comments. No, you should come, I just said we can't talk. We can't recognize you to speak, this is the time to speak. And any further?
No, they're gonna kick us out in a couple of minutes, so it's probably a good time to say goodbye.
I'm gonna, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Stewart is, that's the motion, anybody second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Finger seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.